Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the monthly meeting of the Dayton Board of Health for Wednesday, June 22, 2016. Please join me in the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it spans, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes of May the 25th.
I move that we approve the minutes of May 25, 2016, regular Board of Health meeting.
I second that.
Motion's been made. We second any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Correspondents. This is an agenda item for later, so it looks like we don't have any correspondence. Does anybody have anything here?
Nope.
Announcements?
Announcements. Trash bags, shops, disposal containers, and recycling stickers are all for sale at the Dayton Board of Selectmen's office. You can call (508) 669-6431 for more information. There is a prescription drug drop box located at the Dayton Police Station. It is limited to pill form prescriptions only. You may contact the Dayton Police Station (508) 669-6711 for more information. The public is now able to view the Selectmen's weekly meetings on Dayton's YouTube page. You may go to the town website and follow the link to Dayton's page, or you can go to YouTube and type in "Town of Dayton Meetings." If you need further assistance, call the Board of Selectmen's office. More town departments will follow. The Taunton area Vietnam Vet will be holding a cruise night on Saturday, June 25, from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. in back of Town Hall. Chronicle reporter Ted Reinstein will be appearing at the Dayton Public Library on Thursday, June 23, at 7:00 p.m. to talk about his latest book, Wicked, Pissed: New England's Most Famous Feuds. His book will be available for purchase and signing after a question and answer period. The Board of Selectmen's Office has gathered information from interested residents as to a hazardous waste collection day in order to determine when it should be held. If you have an opinion, please contact the Selectmen's Office to let them know.
Thank you, Ted. I have no old business in the folder. Does anybody have anything?
Nope.
Mm-hmm. New business. Review Discuss Act, FY '16 budget transfer if needed for trash recycling and bulky items. I don't believe Ross put anything together. I don't see anything here in the folder, and I'm not aware of a transfer required by the town accountant. Do you have -- anybody else have anything on that?
Well, we only had figures up until the end of May, so we're looking at the entire month. It looks like we're going to be close, even though Mr. Borges was in today, and he said the amount of tonnage that's being picked up in town is phenomenal, to the point that it's going to affect his contract for next year. We do really need like another week's -- the end of this week's totals of what the charges will be to determine if we're going to have to have that transfer or not. And obviously, it's got to be done before July 1st. So right now, there is no transfer amount needed, but that's not to say it won't be after this week.
Okay. I'm just going to make a note that we might need this for an agenda item, and we might have to have a special meeting next Wednesday, just to wrap up anything before June the The next item is Review Discuss Act on 800 Center Street Tight Tank. I have a report here from James Agia, the Building Commissioner and Agent to the Board of Health, and it's regarding the septic system slash tight tank, 800 Center Street, Dayton. Honorable Selectmen Board Members, as you are aware, the single-family home located at 800 Center Street was vacated and deemed uninhabitable via an inspection that took place on June 15, 2016. The home must remain vacant until such time as a health-related action plan is submitted and approved by the responding town officials. The property owners have not yet given the town an update on the status of said action plan. During the inspection, we, the town, became aware of a potentially illegal septic system or tight tank located on the property servicing the accessory apartment located above the garage. I would recommend that the Board of Health require the property owners of 800 Center Street to conduct a Title V inspection by a state-certified inspector to include a detailed report on all septic systems or other located on said property. Respectfully submitted, James D. Agia, Jr., Building Commissioner and Agent to the Board of Health. Are either of you property owners at 800?
I'm trustee.
Okay. Are you aware of this request for the?
Yes, I am. I just spoke to Mr. Agia today.
Okay. Have you taken steps to get this?
He told me to come to the meeting, see what you were going to recommend, and to speak to Rosalynn and get a list of Title V people so that I could take action. I've already informed them when they were at the house that I will do whatever I have to do to make it so that the property accommodates, so that we are able, my son and I, able to stay there.
Does the Board have any questions, comments?
I guess my question would be, in order for the property to be in compliance, does that mean you have to remove the tight tank?
No. They -- what they -- what was suggested is to bring it to meet -- to conform.
Yeah, to comply. I can add something to that.
Go ahead, Kevin.
If you are allowed to -- if you were going to -- the board was going to allow to have a tight tank there, then I think what's failing there is the -- there's no alarm. And for a tight tank, there's nowhere for that effluent to go out to. There's no leaching field.
Right.
It just stays there.
Has to be pumped.
And individuals, all the -- to be in compliance, you have an alarm, and it tells you when it's about to be -- when it's almost full, and you call the pump to come take it out.
Is that a legal system?
It is, yeah. Those systems are pretty much the last resort. When you can't situate something somewhere, there's no alternative. They put those systems in.
But on that property, that wasn't the case, was it?
I don't know.
There's plenty of -- plenty of area.
Actually, I don't think there's any work of it right now. I'm not sure of it.
I didn't do it. Peter did it, so I'm the one that's occupying now, so I'm just trying to get it so that it can comply.
Well, I'll make a motion to go ahead with what the Commission has suggested, to hire a Title V and state-certified inspector to prepare a detailed report on all the septic systems, you know, that's covering the house and, you know, two separate reports on that property at 800 Center Street.
I second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries unanimously. So are you all set now? You know what you have to do?
Yep. I'm already taking -- working on all the other things that need to be done. And the main property is going to -- you want that report -- can it be together in one report? Because it may be cost-effective for me because of -- this is coming out of my son's trust fund.
It'll have to be two.
Two separate reports.
You can use the same qualified inspector, but...
Right. I'm just trying to see if I could do -- you know what I mean? If you combine it, maybe they'll do something, because Peter's not paying for anything.
What could be done if they put the total -- if it's titled Inspection 800 Center Street?
And then separate the two.
System one.
System one, system two.
System one would be the house, and tight tank would be the other location, but the details will be for them separately.
I'm just trying to... That may be a little difficult. The only reason I say that, I'm not trying to put a monkey wrench in it, each report, it starts off, did it pass, fail, further evaluation, so you'd have to check off one of those, and then follow the rest of the questions.
What I'm looking for, if you will, is a cover sheet?
Yeah.
You know...
There's actually a report, seventeen-page report.
Septic inspection, inspections of systems or tank and or tank, 800 Center Street. There can be two things attached to that, the two things you're talking about, because I've seen your checklist, the multi-page reports.
Yeah, those are seventeen pages.
So...
Each one has just a bunch of questions. What was the sludge, the thickness of that, the scum layer, and you have to...
No, I get it.
Pretty much have to document everything you see and locate every single component on each particular system. But I can -- I'm sure they can come up with some.
Yeah, I'm just trying to do cost-effective, so I don't drain his trust fund.
Next item, it says inspectors' reports, but there are no inspectors' reports, so I'm going to back up and stay under new business. Kevin, we have some material here from you. So one of the things that we wanted clarification on was related to the anti-choking procedures. And you had sent a list of establishments that would be required to do this. So could -- for the benefit of the public, could you just explain what this is all about?
Okay, so there's a regulation. It's 105 CMR 590, and that's actually the one that's 590 009, and it just pretty much says that anti-choking procedures in food establishments, for anyone that has 25 seats or more, you need to have someone that's certified.
Now...
How did it get certified?
Well, I verified with Diane Bersini at the DPH office, just to make sure, because I actually, when I did it in Freetown, I already asked, but I just wanted to verify again. You can take a anti-choking -- they have an anti-choking class, anti-choking saver, whatever it is, and you can also do the CPR.
Who provides the training?
You can Google, and there's different companies that do it, but we had, for an example, we had in Freetown, we had the Fire Department do it. Because the town had selected to train as many individuals in the Town Hall if they wanted to, and then I invited the food establishments that were missing.
Off the top of your head, do you know of any training that's going to take place relatively close?
The next training?
Mm-hmm.
When I spoke to Mr. Madera at the Fire Department, he had originally said, "Oh, I don't think I can do that training."
It has to be certified as a trainer, CPR trainer.
Yeah, so I guess we'd have to either ask again if there's -- well, I -- when he said he wasn't trained at that, to train the CPR, I guess we can find out when they're going to have the next class. I just tried to do that for the establishment, see if I can get them some training.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, if we could...
Because he had another individual, Alice's Brian Stone, I'm sorry that I mentioned his name, but he had told me that he went to a place in Bellingham that's kind of a hike to do some training, but he actually now is in compliance. Some of the other establishments, just so you know...
He is in compliance. Why was a letter drafted to him?
Well, I wanted to send it across to everyone while I was doing my food inspections, so he's done it. There's an individual, when I just did the inspection in Dunkin' Donuts, that individual says he has it, but they have two shifts. It's supposed to be -- it's supposed to be a person that's certified per shift. Now, Alice's wouldn't have to worry about that, because they're only open in the morning. George Hill's, when he gets it, he's only open in the evening, depending on how they establish their hours. Like, Bingham only operates that one day on Tuesday, so they just need that one person.
Okay, so do you have a current list that you know for sure, where they have to have this training?
Anyone that's 25 seats or more, that's when I put down that list that I gave.
Okay, so we don't have to send this one, because he's all set?
Yep.
So one of the questions that came up was, what about public suppers? Several of the churches in town have public suppers, and the Boy Scouts have them too on occasion. And most of those seat many more?
I would just recommend to the Board that of only the ones that we permit, because there's actually something in the food code that says potluck events, which we do not inspect. So the -- in the word "public events," I can actually send something to you. When food is shared between individuals, whether they accept a fee or not, then you do not -- well, Board of Health does not inspect. So you could actually charge a fee to have a graduation party at your house, but all the food is shared. Everybody's sharing the food, some people are bringing it in, and...
What if it's catered?
If it's catered, it would be the same thing. If the food is being shared. If it's -- if it's the other hand, where one of our churches has suppers, and you're going there, and you're purchasing a plate, and it's just for you, then that's when we...
Church suppers, I'm talking about a not-serve-family style.
Yes, we do have that one that we're requiring to...
Well, no. I've been to -- I've been to other church suppers at other facilities. The spaghetti supper that I've gone to that the Scouts have, I've been to them both at North Dayton and also on Elm Street.
Then they would have to get a permit for us.
Where a plate of food, you might go to a line. It depends on what's being served. For example, at St. Nicholas, sometime it's a buffet, but you go up with a plate. You don't serve yourself for the most part. Or you sit at the table, and they come around and put a plate already -- it's already in.
Yeah.
So it's an individual plate. So my question is, if it's that kind of a supper for that one event, there should be somebody there who is trained.
So that's 25 seats, yes.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, there would be, because they usually fund raises.
And I guess that's where the miscommunication was. We believed that was already in place.
Okay. Now, what about the chicken barbecue? Or a chicken barbecue that's held out here, that tickets are sold for, where people sit at those tables out in the pavilion and eat? You get -- you're given your portion, and you sit down. There should be somebody there, right?
There should be someone, but we hadn't mentioned if there's emergency personnel.
Yeah, well, we usually do have somebody here.
Then hopefully, that would be able to cover. But I guess when we have individuals come in now for the permit, we should -- for an -- with an application, we should probably really just take a good look at and say, what are you going to have, how many people, here's what's required.
How is it being served?
How's it being served? And this is exactly what's required, the serve safety, allergy awareness, if it's prepared foods, of course, a fee, liability insurance, if the town doesn't hold liability. And, oh, wait a minute, you have over 25 seats. Is there anyone in your group that is CPR certified? Give us a copy of yours.
CPR or anti-choking?
That's when I ask. It can be used for this particular...
CPR certification without the choking training?
Well, here's why. When I verified with her, when you take the CPR class, there's a brief section on international signs for choking.
Yep.
What do you do? You know, you finger in somebody's mouth, you could actually make it worse, get the food stuck in there. So they briefly speak about it, but then they go into more of, now the person's laying down, what do you do?
So they don't go into the Heimlich maneuver, per se?
No, we went into -- he didn't show us on that one. We spoke about it, but that's why there was the gray area, and I verified, and she said, no, we actually accept the CPR as well.
Okay. Kevin, so does that mean that when a food establishment -- and I'm asking because I don't under -- I don't completely understand, at least I don't think I do. So when an establishment comes to the Board of Health for a permit, do they need to submit with that food permit their -- some sort of proof of the anti-choking training, or proof, you know, their CPR certification or something?
Yeah, so when you get the whole application in front of the Board, you all put your signatures on there, you're all looking for the same thing. We're looking for insurance, we're looking for payment, if they're preparing food, we're looking for valid allergy awareness, the Food Safety Manager Certificate, which is a lot of times considered the serve safe, that's the most popular one. But then now, you want to also look for how many seats? Is it 25 seats or more? And that certification. I'll give you an example. Nannes, I checked Nannes. Oh, you can actually -- now that we're going through this, Nannes is 24 seats.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah. But I told her, if she plans on -- she had some seating outside that made it 24, just a little...
Right.
Just the good weather for it. But I said, if you plan on doing another table out there, then you're going to need it. She goes, well, it's still up for consideration then, so she has time. If she wanted to do that, she can do it, but right now, she says she's going to stay at the 24.
Okay.
I would just send a letter to everyone we have on our list to be consistent. If they have it already, they have it, and they're in compliance for when it rolls around again in August 1st, when they leave their permits.
So each year, they have to...
Yeah, even though they're valid for only two years, they would have to show, every year, we never say, oh, we'll use last year's food safety manager, because in the restaurant business, there is some turnover. You might have the cook leave, and now the place is left without a food safety manager.
Okay, so the training is valid for two years? Once you get it? Okay, all right.
And how long is CPR training good for, or was that only the anti-choking?
That's what I know. That's the two years, yeah.
Years ago, the Red Cross used to have free classes for CPR.
It's up in the hundreds now, over $100.
Really? To become CPR certified?
We paid to the town, it was $25 a person, which was pretty cheap.
That's because you had in-house trainers, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, now, the other thing is, you had submitted a letter back on June 8th, and this is in relationship to some recommendations for changes in fee schedule. I'll read this letter. Honorable Board Members, our office is requesting to make three changes to the Board of Health permit fee schedule. The first change would be to delete the massage permit entirely, since it is now under the state's jurisdiction. The second change would be to add a non-residential pool permit for the fee of $100. This fee was determined by what other local boards of health are charging. The third and last request is to divide the current $75 food establishment permit fee and reclassify it by the establishment's specific operation. Retail food establishments, retail only, would be $75 annually, and an establishment that prepares and serves food would be entitled, would be titled "food establishment or food service," and that permit would be $100 annually. This fee would be lower than what other local boards are charging, $140 on average, but I feel it is a fair increase. I would recommend, if time permits, to have these proposed changes addressed at the next available Board of Health meeting, so that they may be applied before we start the annual permit renewal process. So massage comes off. We don't do that anymore, right?
Yeah, we don't permit those anymore.
And right now, the annual food service permit is $75?
Correct.
And you're suggesting it goes to 100?
Correct.
When's that expire? July?
7/31.
7/31. We wouldn't have time to read it three times, three consecutive meetings, because we only meet every other week, or once a month.
No, I'd have to schedule another meeting if we're going to put it in effect.
Do you have to read it three consecutive?
Yeah.
The other reason, I really -- one of the main reasons I wanted to include the swimming pool fee, we have actually Whitney Academy that's applying for a permit, and what's the fee?
Before we go to swimming pools, you were talking about retail food establishments, meaning retail only. Their permit fee would be $75. Is that the same as a retail store permit?
Yes, so...
Oh, no, it says that.
Right now, it's 75 across the board. We would keep the retail at 75, and now the restaurants, the ones that prepare food, the ones that have the 25 seats, the ones that have the common -- but that's common Vic, would be $100. Those inspections are just -- they're longer, more record-keeping, now you're doing the desserts that you need, the anti-choking, and it's still lower than the average of -- I checked with other towns. Roehbuth is 250, Westport is 200, Lakeville's 150, and Berkeley's 125, so it's...
It's a little confusing. You want to take a look at this schedule?
There's a retail store permit on there. We've had for a few years, $100.
Is this a whole new classification you'd want to insert in there?
There is a retail store permit we've had on there.
You say, divide the current $75 food establishment permit. That's the one for the restaurants would go to $100, right?
Yes.
The one I've marked. And reclassify it by the establishment's specific operation. Okay, so those are the restaurants. Retail food establishments, retail only, would be $75 annually, but I think on there it says a retail store is 100. So where would this fit? Is this a new classification?
You have -- can you show me what you have?
Alphabetical order.
Retail store permit.
$100. Refat that for about three years now.
How come we haven't been charged $100 on them?
I don't know.
We've been charged 75, every single one's out.
Like, who falls under that?
So is everybody that, for example, if I can walk into a convenience store and grab a soda and a sandwich off the counter, you know, those wrapped-up things that, you know, you can buy prepackaged? Is that considered...
$100.
Is that considered retail store, or is that food service?
If you grab a sandwich from the fridge and a soda, it's a retail store.
But it's prepared.
They're serving food.
All right, so what is it you have?
They're not making the sandwiches. They can buy a sandwich.
How do you know they're not home?
Almeida's?
Okay, but that's not what I'm saying.
Almeida's is a food establishment.
Okay, so my question to you is, now, Almeida's also have places where you can sit.
Yeah, but here's what we do in other towns, and you can do the same thing. On a place like Almeida's, you go by the specific operation. So you can say, you sell grocery items, you're a retail store. Oh, you want to prepare items too? You're going to have a food establishment. So it's the 100 plus the 75. You charge them 175. Same thing when you have, you go down the list, you say, oh, you're -- you sell tobacco as well? Well, you pay another $50 for tobacco. You just go pick, you just go to each...
So it's not one or the other, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
What I don't understand, I'm sorry, this should be opposite. Why would a retail store be more money than a regular food establishment?
Well, as I said, I can't figure out where to put -- you said the third and last request is to divide the current $75 food establishment permit. So you divide that, now that, the restaurant will be $100, which is what I wrote in there. And then you're saying retail food establishments, retail only, would be $75 annually, and an establishment that prepares and serves food would be titled "food establishment or food service," and that permit would be 100 annually. I don't know where that falls on that list.
It doesn't. I was always under the impression that across the board, it was $75. And this had, we had discussions in the past, saying, why are you charging... why are you charging? What's the difference? Why, why is one, like, uh, Mandoz's came up? Why are you charging Mandoz's if he's only selling candy bars and peanuts? And you're going to Giorgio's as full-blown meals? And so I came to the board today and said, you're right. The retail stores, which I never saw this, retail stores should be 75. And the food establishments should be, we actually put them less than the average, but without making too much of an increase, a hundred dollars.
Okay, so based on what you're holding in your hand?
Yes.
And what you've written here, I crossed out the massage permit, because we don't do that anymore.
Yes.
I increased the restaurant, so to speak, from 75 to $100. This retail thing, should that stay at 75, what's listed down, but the, down below it says 100?
I feel it should be 75. That's my opinion.
So you're saying you would reduce one?
Uh, and here's.
So if Hannaford was indicted, you might charge them 75.
We charge Hannaford, uh, 175. Because they sell groceries and they prepare food there. When you go to Hannaford's, they fry the chicken for you.
Yeah, yeah.
It'd be both. And you charge them 125 for the tobacco permit, so it'd be whatever it is. When you do the math, you would just, for each operation,
Right.
you pick, um, I don't know if you have bakery here, here's a good, here's a good example. We have a Dunkin' Donuts in Freetown. They're one of the bakeries out of all these, you know how they supply the other ones?
Yes.
So they're the bakery, they're the food establishment, and they actually sell items. Sell the drinks and stuff, so they get one, two, three.
Three.
Okay, so they bake on-site in Freetown?
They bake on-site, so we say they're the, so you're the bakery and you're the food establishment.
Because they're preparing it?
Yeah.
They're selling it, they serve some products, and they also, they actual, they actually sell products, like coffee and tea bags and mugs and junk?
That's retail.
So for, so for Almidas, it would be the retail, the food, the tobacco. And I'm not thinking, I'm not missing anything else. Giorgio's would just be the food establishment. Mandoz's would just be a retail. Depending on, you just say, what are you actually preparing? Then you have the other ones that are just temporary. We have one more unit, um. You can actually make a spreadsheet, and what I've done is, I don't wanna keep mentioning Freetown. What I've done is a spreadsheet where you list all what applies to a food establishment on top. And the name of the, the name of the establishment, and you just make the X.
Right.
And you already know, we can do it by hand, I make the X.
Yeah.
And it's different where I, I actually sign the permits. So I verify the fee before I sign it.
Okay.
So I, I make sure, okay, we have one, two, three. And sometimes it's been discussed, well, do they do this, do they, no, alright. And then you verify later, but.
Okay, so, so then on the bottom of this, what your recommendation is reduce that 100 to 75 for retail store permit?
I would, yes.
Alright, that doesn't, that doesn't come up until December.
But you say we have nobody that's been charged that?
No, from my knowledge, every time I look at the permit, they say, oh, it says 75.
Retail store?
All the retail stores, aren't they, isn't everyone coming up on August 1st?
This says December 31st, retail, re-
Retail.
Retail store permit, 12/31.
I think we should verify this all with Ross to make sure what's going on next for the permits.
I don't see anything here for August. December, July, April, April, July, 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 December. This was, these rates were established in 2013.
Right, this one, we put that retail store in.
Every permit that I'm looking at now, they've all say, I just went to a few restaurants, and this is, they expire July 31st? That's why I was trying to move this along.
Okay, for a food service permit?
They do, right?
Yes.
Okay.
For a retail store permit, it says December.
That's perfect then. Here's another example, for those, uh, Dunkin' Donuts would be the food establishment. Then you have the milk and cream, that we charge an extra 20. See what I'm saying? They just, you just pick what applies to this establishment.
Yeah, milk, cream, and oleomargarine.
And, and again, Almidas would be food, the retail, milk and cream, tobacco. So they would have four of this list.
You hit them with Lord's Day sales too?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
That's what I mean, it's five actually. When you actually, when you make that spreadsheet and go by each one and say, what does apply to this establishment, you start hitting the, uh. But I feel, when I came here, is to make the retail less than the food establishment.
Okay, so Brett, would you make a note that we're gonna check with Ross to find out what she's putting on permits for food establishments and retail stores?
You mean how much she's charging them?
Mm-hmm.
Now, swimming pool permits, who, who's that gonna apply to?
We only have one right now, and Whitney Academy has two pools. They're actually requesting an inspection tomorrow. Only one pool's operational, they only want all of them one. But, um, he had asked me, what are you recharging? And I said, I believe it may be 100. I would find out more at this meeting.
How about Papa Squash? Do we have to charge them, Papa Squash, on Horton Street?
It was like a private club there. You know, when you, when you're at, on William Street and you turn to go up Horton Street? You go between where Tom Ferry lives and the Reed Brothers home. If you keep going straight up, you know the, where Tom Ferry lives, there's a pond with a small dam. Well, that used to be a whole pond, but if you continue up Horton Street, just a short distance, and if you look in to the left, you're going to see a building in there that looks like it's not in the best shape. When that was built, they used to use the, the river for swimming. Then they put a pool in. I don't know the status of the club, but it was a club that you, I think you paid dues to attend.
You paid.
Membership.
Still operation?
Oh, yeah.
I don't, that's the first I've ever heard of this.
Put that one on your list.
If they are, then I-
This wouldn't apply to residents, you know, pools.
But if it's a, that's what I'm saying, it's non-residential, so it's semi-public. So anybody that comes, either they're part of this group, so these individuals, Whitney Academy's a group home.
Right.
And they, they said the same thing, it's a residential one, like, it's not a residential pool, because you have some guests, but that's, you, the clientele that they have, and the, and the-
A residential pool would be my private home?
Yes, but I don't, I don't inspect that, uh, the building inspector would have his regulations governing
Okay.
what the, uh, what the measures are to prevent any accidents.
Okay.
Besides that.
Isn't Whitney Academy a group home where the residents stay there year-round?
Yes, uh, I, I don't have, yeah, I don't-
They have their official address as there.
Correct, but they are also inspected by the state. So I went there today, well, I did the other one in Freetown. They, um, they're inspected by the state, so they have different regulations. A regular group home is not inspected by the state or the local boards of health. That's why they, they're different. Like, I don't go to your house and check if your refrigerator is working, your smoke detectors, check for asbestos, check your pumping rackets. They are under different regulations. That's why when the children are there with the pool, they fall under Board of Health. We oversee them, the state funds them, so there has to be checks and balances. Same thing with a nursing home. The state funds the nursing home, but you have to inspect that those residents are being taken care of. Or they just, uh, they don't take any admissions, and everything stops. That's why they fall different.
Kevin, on this list, where, where are swimming pools?
What is it on?
So this is a new classification?
Correct.
And this will be a non-residential pool?
Correct. So on the non-residential, it could be a waiting pool, a spa, just say this, any establishment puts in a hot tub. Kitty pools and regular adult pools.
So if the town decided to put in a waiting area, it would fall under that?
Correct.
Okay, so non-residential?
I don't understand the word non-residential. I obviously know what non-residential means. But who would be putting in a pool if they weren't a resident? I understand an establishment, I get the hot tub example that you-
It could be a hotel has a pool, uh, the school has a pool.
DR.
If DR has the pool.
Oh, oh, you said if, I'm like, that was an old rumor.
Yeah.
It's true. Okay, I understand.
Depending what it is, um, Freetown Forest has a little kiddie waiting pool. It's inspected. Whatever it is, um, hotels, a lot of hotels have these spas. That you gotta make sure it doesn't go up in temperature, it's a clean, a lot of bacteria go in there. Check the railings, whatever it is in the regulations that we check. When it comes to your own home, you could, you go to the building inspector and say, I'd like to put in a pool. He goes and checks, do you have a barrier, is any kids gonna fall in? Do you need a fence, self-latch, a latching gate? That's different from us, because again, boards of health are not gonna go to everybody's house. Same thing with like the public events. We're not gonna go to every graduation party. Every, every birthday, and see what you're serving. No, 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 that's potato salad, it's not so warm. It'd be too much. So we keep those out, and only the public or anyone that's inspected by the state.
Okay, so, non-residential pool permit would be, um, $100. And should it run January to December?
I would say, yeah. Some people are gonna be just seasonal, but you might have an establishment that comes in, well, it could be that establishment that you mentioned on Horton Street that says, I run all year long.
And there are some, not here, but there are some hotels that have outdoor pools that actually are open in the wintertime, because they-
Yeah, there's one in, uh, the Holiday Inn. My kid goes there all the time in the wintertime.
Is that right?
You pay $7 and enjoy the evening.
Right, but, but it's outside?
It's indoor.
No, no, I'm talking about outside pools.
Oh, alright.
Green Mountain Inn has one that's open year-round. Um, they just drag a blanket over it at night. Um, when they close it, but, uh, yeah, probably the only thing that keeps it from opening would be if they had a really heavy snowfall and they have to clean it off, but, uh, yeah, they, and they have a hot tub too. But, uh, that's in Stowe, Vermont. It gets pretty cold, but there are people there in the winter that will go in, because the pool's, I don't know, 80 degrees or something.
Nice.
I don't know. But it's right off the spa area. But it is outside. Okay, so, uh, again, just to reiterate, food service permit is the one we would announce at $100, so $25 increase. And we'll have to check the expiration dates on these. We have, we have stricken massage parlor, because it's no longer applicable. The retail store permit you're recommending reduced to 75?
Yes, it makes sense to be less than the regular food establishment, I feel.
And add a new classification, non-residential pool permit, $100. And we're looking at expiration of December 31st, so that would be an annual calendar year. Does anybody else have anything under the fee schedule? Not, we have one more thing here, Kevin.
We do?
The non-criminal disposition thing.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I have one more question, I apologize, for the fees. So we have, the Whitney Academy's gonna be inspected tomorrow. I know you still have to read it three times.
Three consecutive meetings.
Could we just, I must be having somebody object, can we hold $100 back?
Can we do what?
They, they were gonna pay the fee of $100.
Mm-hmm.
Can we hold it until it's approved and submit it? How do we do this? Since we don't have a classification, somebody's applying for a permit, but we don't have a fee to go with it.
You don't have a permit here, until it's okay, legal.
Yeah, that was gonna be, that's the inspection tomorrow.
Until three consecutive readings.
They're looking at it at least July, I would think.
They've always had it open.
Yes.
You, you, you can't shut them down, because there's no fee put in place yet. So when the fee becomes
That's when they pay.
Accepted, that's when they pay.
So-
It's okay to do the inspections.
Well, the, the, right now, since this is not in place, you would normally go there and inspect it and tell them if anything needs to be cleaned up. You would pass, fail, whatever, and then if you, and there were failures, you would go back and re-inspect.
Correct.
Okay, so until we get this established, I think you've gotta proceed the way you normally would.
Yep.
And just give us a report on what's happening. On the non-criminal disposition rates, uh, this was, um, what we voted at town meeting, right? This was on the warrant?
Uh, yes.
So we're all set with this?
Okay.
Town meeting hasn't been on cable yet, but, um, were you at town meeting?
No, I was, uh, like, I couldn't make it.
Okay, well, when they, do you get Channel 9?
Yes.
Okay, when the town meeting is shown, which I will think will be coming pretty soon, if you get a chance to watch it, just so you see exactly what was voted, and you can get a copy of the warrant to see what was on there, but, uh, it got voted, so I think we're all set with that.
So that was put on as a, did, did they change the word bylaw in regulation? No, it was, I'll have to see what they said.
Yeah, okay. I think it was vote, it's not a bylaw, I think it was a vote to accept the sections of the law, which is different than a bylaw.
That's fine.
But, um, Sumider's can tell you exactly what the vote was. And then you'll, you can proceed accordingly.
So if that becomes official, then I can actually, it's the last step, but it is a means for compliance when you can't get anywhere
Right.
with a non-criminal disposition.
Right.
The goal always is, we're always taught, to seek compliance.
Right.
Or however you get there, to get compliance, but there are some times where with the non-criminal disposition, you'll sit in front of a clerk magistrate or a judge and actually you can get compliance that way.
Yep, okay. Alright, so if you check with Sue and find out with exactly what the vote was, then I think you're good to go.
Perfect, good news.
Um, are there any, uh, reports?
I have a report.
Go ahead.
Selectman Goulart. So this is, um, I'm about to read to you a brief summary of a presentation that, uh, Selectman Goulart and I attended last week by Dr. Alfred Di Maria, who is a medical director and also works on the Bureau of Infectious Disease Prevention Response and Services at the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. He's also a state epidemiologist, um, and this took place at the Holiday Inn in Taunton, Massachusetts on June 16th. Uh, the focus will be on matters pertaining to, uh, public health in our town. So Zika virus is a mosquito-borne disease that was first discovered in the Zika forest in Uganda. It is endemic in Africa and has spread to the western hemisphere in 2014. It can only be transmitted the following ways, through sexual contact from mosquito to human, from human to mosquito, and also from mother to baby in utero. The risk of transmission is low in Massachusetts, and that's primarily because the mosquitoes that cause the virus are present in very low numbers. There are two different, uh, strains of mosquito that can cause it and carry it. 90% of individuals with Zika virus do not know they are infected, because they do not exhibit symptoms. And the symptoms include headache, fever, painful red eyes or conjunctivitis, joint pain, itching rash, which is the most common symptom, and muscle pain. Zika virus is associated with encephalitis, um, and in particular meningoencephalitis, which is inflammation of the brain. This affects mostly pregnant women who reside in infected areas. Um, and this mostly occurs during the second trimester, um, which appears to be a time of particular susceptibility. One in 10,000 births result in microcephaly in Massachusetts, and microcephaly is a, um, smaller than normal head. And is also spread, as I mentioned before, through sexual contact. And the Massachusetts Department of Public Health suggests that individuals who have traveled to infected areas, which would include South America, which is highly, uh, has a lot of those mosquitoes and, uh, high for Zika spread right now, who exhibit symptoms, so if you exhibit symptoms and are planning a pregnancy to wait before you engage, um, in hopefully safe sex, uh, and this is eight weeks for females, six months for males. Prevention methods include reducing mosquito exposure, that will be window and door screens. Prevention methods include reducing mosquito exposure, that will be window and door screens, netting, staying indoors during peak mosquito times, reducing mosquitoes, so reducing standing water, preventative mosquito control measures, and also reducing mosquito bites, so covering your extremities using repellents such as OFF, also repellents containing DEET, and oil of lemon eucalyptus, which would be a more natural remedy.
Thank you, Brett. Are there any questions? Do you have any public input for the Board of Public Health? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I second.
Motion is made in second, in all of favor?
Aye.
Will be adjourned. You should probably give this at the-
Thank you, cable, we'll be right back.
Should give that to Selectments too, because it might be a different audience.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks for coming in, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin.
Kevin, how are you doing?